All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for, it's Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. It is 2:03 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina McKee, to my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Grant, participating virtually today. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Joshua Cummings and Jennifer Walker, Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. On the meaning of order, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a land acknowledgement, Mr. Vice Chair.
We would like to also start today with a land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and stewarded the lands and waterways of this county with great care and who continue as sovereign nations today, specifically the Squawksen Island, Nisqually, and Chealas people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, and we now have an agenda to look at. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion is second to approve the proposed agenda. Any discussion? Hearing now a call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 The motion carries. So that brings us to our presentations this afternoon. We have four consent proclamations, and I'm going to pass it to Ellen Massey to walk us through those.
Good afternoon, here and forth. Get your four product presentations, proclamations this afternoon. And first, the product of the National Voter Registration Day, and I'll get it, and I'll try to help.
Yeah, let's get your microphones so people online can hear the recording. I think it's better.
All right, can you hear me? All right, great. Well, thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy, and you can't vote if you don't register. So we work really hard to make it as simple as possible for people across the country. And recognizing National Voter Registration Day is a great way to just remind people how important their vote really is. Last year, I'm happy to say that we surpassed 200,000 registered voters in Thurston County, and that number is holding, which is very exciting. And some new programs that people may not be aware of is that people who are 16 and 17-year-olds, or 16 and 17-year-old can now pre-register to vote. So if somebody is 17, but they'll be 18 before the general election, they can vote in the primary election. So I think it's always important to remind people of that because that's a really great feature that we have here in Washington State. And thanks to same-day voter registration, people can register and vote up until 8 o'clock on Election Day. They can register online at votwa.gov up until eight days before the election. And then after the eight-day online cutoff, they can come into our office, register in person, or during midterm elections, we also have a second voting center where they can register as well. And they can even transfer their voter registration from one city to another on Election Day if they have moved and have not received or voted a ballot in that jurisdiction. So to vote, all you need is your voter right, Washington voter, Washington driver's license, or the last four of your social security number, and we will give you a voter registration card that makes that official. So I just want to thank you for your support and your partnership year after year. This is the 12th year that we have been recognizing National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County, and it's only the 13th year it's been in existence. So thank you very much. And now I'm thrilled to reveal something new, something that we hope will inspire civic pride every time somebody casts a ballot. So we are going to be unveiling today our new I Voted sticker, which will be in every general election voter pamphlet through, in every voter package that people receive through 2027. And...
That's cool.
So we'll turn it around for the crowd to see also. Beautiful design was created by Alexis Trono, who is here today with us, as well as her mother. Maybe you can do a little wave.
All right, good job.
And she asked me to tell you that really what inspired her was the natural beauty of our state, our county, and the iconic capital that we have, along with our state flower, which are rhododendrons. So, you know, she really did a great job of bringing these elements together in a design that feels, you know, both patriotic and fresh. It's a soft, modern take on red, white, and blue, with rhododendrons adding that additional local touch. So Alexis, I wanted to take a moment to say thank you for participating and on behalf of our office, our voters, and everyone who will proudly wear this sticker as a symbol of their participation and civic engagement. So thank you for your participation. I understand it was very last minute, so she did a fantastic job. And we'll turn this around. Emma, do you want to help? And of course, I've got special. Reverse stickers.
Really nice.
Well done. I'll leave extras for you.
I'm gonna steal them.
Thanks for turning it around. I was gonna just ask. I was like, can somebody turn it around so I can see it? It's beautiful.
Yeah, great sticker.
So Mary, what does the, the folks who are not yet 18 but will be 18, do they get, like, I'm sure they could come in and do something, but do they, how else do they connect? Because I'm just asking, my daughter is in that category. My kids are September and October, so they both had the opportunity to get that kind of surprise primary ballot before the November. And I don't remember, I'm sure she didn't come in here, so where would she have gotten, like, registered at?
So when you get your driver's license, and that's the whole theory behind this, a lot of people get their driver's license when they turn 16.
Yeah.
So at that time, at the Department of Motor Vehicles, they can pre-register. Or they can come into our office or things like that. And there are also a lot of voter registration drives at school. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Auditor Hall.
And we will, we will take our I Voted stickers.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Are you guys gonna display that in the atrium?
Uh, we're gonna have it up on the board.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Auditor Hall. Next, we have the proclamation for First Responders Day and Day of Service and Remembrance. And we have various members in the audience here today, and we'll have Brian Hurley, the President of Thurston County Association of Fire Chiefs, to speak to the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and just briefly here, I'd like to thank you on behalf of our, on behalf of our members, our 12 fire agencies in Thurston County, for this proclamation. You know, as we recall the events of, the horrific events of September 11, 2001, you know, obviously, many civilians died, but sacrifices made by public servants on that day. 343 FDNY firefighters and 72 law enforcement personnel from various agencies gave the ultimate sacrifice that day. We also must not forget the hundreds of first responders who have died since 9/11 from occupational lung disease and cancers, and that's an ongoing issue. And they acquired these diseases while, while working in the rescue operations. But we are grateful to live in a community that, that recognizes, appreciates, and supports first responders, including fire, EMS, law enforcement, private ambulance, all EMS dispatchers, emergency management staff, and we could, we could list even more who support our response efforts. So with that, I want to thank you, and I'll make sure I share this proclamation with all of our 12 member agencies and show, transfer your appreciation. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here and for your service. Third, we have a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month. And to speak to that, we have Elizabeth, who is our education and outreach specialist for community health.
Hi, how are you guys? Thanks so much for allowing me to come and talk about Suicide Prevention Month. You guys have really been supporting a lot of my work here at the county regarding prevention. I do QPR training for free for anyone in the, the community who would like it, which is Question, Persuade, Refer. And it's a 90-minute training, and it really is kind of used as a pre-crisis intervention tool to help people start talking about mental health. And being able to know how to support one another, you know, talking about mental health can be really hard, especially if it's with someone that you may not know, or even with someone that you do know. And just being able to know how to start a conversation, whether that's, you know, your daughter or your mom, or your dad, or just your neighbor. And so I just want to say thank you for allowing me to kind of really promote my work. Since 2023, I have trained over 60 people. I would love to have that number be even more. We bought over 1,000 certificates to train, and so I really want to make sure that everyone in the community has access to that. And so, yeah, thank you so much for just supporting my work. Yeah.
What is the next training going to be available for?
You, I do it at anyone's discretion. So all you have to do is go on our website and put in a request, and then I contact you for when it's best available. And I will do in-person, I will do online, whatever is easiest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. And then I do believe the clerk passed out some pamphlets that you created and hand out as well. So the board should all have that. And then we have the proclamation for Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. And to speak to that, we have Maria and Cynthia, who are from the Commission of Hispanic Affairs.
Hello.
So what's the difference here? Let us know if you can't hear us online. So good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting us today to share the proclamation. This is the fourth year that we've done this with you all, so I believe it's now a tradition officially.
My name is Cynthia Tomayo, Chief of Operations and Policy. The commission was created in 1971, almost 55 years ago, as a mechanism for the Latino community to have a voice in government. Now, more than ever, the visibility in our, of our community in all levels of government is very crucial.
And for the record, my name is Maria Seguens. I direct the Commission on Hispanic Affairs. Our commission is a cabinet-level state agency. We work with communities across the state to learn and amplify issues that are being experienced by our community, and we advise the governor, the legislature, and the state agencies on policies that could better serve our community. We also work with communities across the state to ensure they have access to the tools that they need to engage with government, whether that is learning about programs and services, or whether that's underscoring the various levels of government, their roles, and how to ensure that they can effectively engage with them so that their voices are being heard.
And as an example, we have a contract with the Department of Ecology to spread awareness about safer choice products in central Washington. We have used the funding to hold community connection sessions in Spanish for small business owners with the goal that they start carrying these items in their small tiendas and connection sessions in Spanish to teach residents about safer choice products. That can be what they are, where to find them, and the health benefits of using them in their home. Another example is our Rapid Response Hub. With the recent federal changes, some of our community members are living in fear and are physically avoiding government buildings. So the hub is a one-stop site in Spanish and English that provides information about family separation plans and other resources they need to keep themselves safe.
And I want to close out by thanking you again, not only for the proclamation, but for your action. The Know Your Rights page that you added onto the county website not only provides information and clarity, but it speaks volumes about how thoughtful the county is being in making sure that we are serving each and every resident of the county. Earlier, I mentioned that we now have a tradition, and I'd like to invite us to turn this tradition into a habit of working closer together. We're just a call away. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is public comment related to items on this afternoon's agenda. Take a minute, folks shuffle out. We'd like to. Sure, let me just go over through this. Okay, I have.
Sorry, that's the sign-up sheet for the public comment related to general matters. There is no sign-ups.
No sign-ups. Okay, so we'll be getting to general matters, I think, in fairly short order, but is there anyone with a public comment on something related to today's agenda? We'll take that now. Okay, then we will move on to County Manager update.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to highlight Thurston County's emergency management response to the August 2025 Rainy Year brush fire. We'll start with just a quick overview. Swift activation and public safety alerts. Emergency management activated the Emergency Coordination Center and issued county alert messages to quickly notify residents and guide evacuation actions. Strong inter-agency collaboration. They coordinated seamlessly with fire districts, law enforcement, and public works to ensure a unified, effective response that prioritized community safety. Community-focused support. They open and staffed a shelter for potentially displaced residents and coordinated with partners to prepare resources for livestock evacuation, ensuring both people and animals at safe refuge. Professionalism under pressure. Demonstrated exceptional teamwork by working across multiple agencies, showcasing the dedication of Thurston County employees and volunteers. And excellence in service. Highlighted the strength of partnership and the county's ability to deliver timely, compassionate, professional emergency response when residents needed it the most. Second update I have is Washington Department of Ecology Outstanding Performance Awards. We're pleased to announce that out of more than 300 wastewater treatment plants in Washington, only 121 were recognized for outstanding performance. Thurston County is proud that all three of our plants earned this distinction for performance in 2024. These awards highlight our operators' dedication to protecting public health, water quality, and the environment through consistent, high-level performance. Boston Harbor and Tamashem plants on the Puget Sound play a key role in protecting nearshore water and sensitive marine habitats. The Grand Mound Plant, located in a rapidly developing part of Thurston County, ensures the new housing and businesses have reliable service. These awards demonstrate the skilled team of Thurston County Public Works, operators whose expertise, attention to detail, and daily work keep our communities safe and our waterways clean. Thank you so much.
Questions for County Manager? Okay, thank you. We have a consent agenda, items 1 through 10. Any requests to forward? The motion to approve. I move to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 10.
One second.
Thank you. Second to approve, send items 1 through 7. All in favor to aye? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to Commissioner, Community Reports. Commissioner Grant, you want to go first?
Uh, actually, I'm not prepared. Can someone go first, and then I'll grab my notes?
Okay, absolutely. Commissioner Claus?
I can go. So between now and the last meeting, I attended the 2025 Electoral Officials Housing Bus Tour. Couple might, let's see, I know Commissioner Mensah was there, and a lot of elected officials around the county were there as well. And we, that tour was put on by, I believe, Olympia Master Builders and a couple other groups. And I had to leave about halfway through the tour, but I was able to learn quite a bit about the permitting process. And some very skilled individuals taught us quite a bit in about 20 minutes, and I feel like it could have been a couple days' worth of material. So that was really informative, and I enjoyed the opportunity to join my elected official teammates and colleagues on that tour. I also attended the Project Safer Ice Cream Social at the Public Health and Social Services Building. I toured the new Nisqually Generations Healing Center, which is gonna be opening within the next several weeks. I don't know the exact date, but I think it'll be in October sometime. I attended the Community Land Trust Social Hour event in Lacey, and I also attended with my seatmates the Green Cove Fish Passage Ribbon Cutting event. I attended Overdose Awareness Day downtown in Heritage Park and toured the Harlequin Theater downtown. I also attended the Panorama City Appreciation Gathering and the Garden and Youth Development Program Annual Harvest Festival at the Family Juvenile Court, and that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier? I had a number of different meetings. I appreciate the County Manager organizing a meeting with the CPED team to talk about the climate element of our comp plan. And just, I needed a little extra tutelage on, on how those, how those pieces fit together. Fire Commissioners Association had its monthly meeting out on Lake Lawrence. It was their annual dinner meeting, so that one's always nice to go to because they feed you. Subject that night was, they had candidates from the, from one of the port races attend and present on, on their, on their different campaigns. Had a Medic One staff check-in during that monthly with the Medic One staff and county, county administration. And we talked about the different things that are coming up with Medic One. Biggest subject is their upcoming budget. And there's a lot of, a lot, a lot of good things being done there. One, one thing that I, I think is really cool is a program that's grown where we are, we're, we're training our own EMTs to become medics. Typically, that's something that we would, you know, we would hire people from outside the system. And in the next budget that they've proposed, I think they're tripling the number of individuals that we'll be picking from within our own fire departments to send to medic school, and that's great. It is hard to hire medics, and, and then having ones that are hired from within the system that have kind of grown up in the system, I think, is a, is a good program. I had my meeting with District Court Staff, and the big thing that we talked about was future courthouse planning. And they're, they're excited for that. We talked about the onboarding of the Olympia Courts and how they're dealing with and handling that. I also attended the Green Cove Ribbon Cutting. It's a beautiful bridge. It was, it was nice to see everybody out there. It was extremely well-attended. And then, like Commissioner Claus mentioned, I also attended the Nisqually Generational Healing Center. That's the, the medical facility that is now where Frankie's Pool Hall used to be. And the building is incredible. It's, it really is well-done. The lighting in it is, I mean, there wasn't a room that you went into that didn't feel like it, you know, had, had a, like, just this healing vibe to it. So, you know, there was a lot of thought that went into it. I, I really think it's gonna be a major asset to the region. And it should, like was mentioned, it should be open in the next month or a couple weeks. And I would encourage anybody to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Capital Land Trust Social Hour event. I also have been attending the Washington State Association of Counties Legislative Steering Committee Subcommittee. Two of them, one for transportation, the other one for Law and Justice and Human Services. So we're going over all of the policies that kind of make up what we support in the coming year. Attended the National Association of Counties County Impacts from the White House and Congress. They're just giving us updates on what is coming, going on with some of the executive orders. I also attended a webinar from the National Association of Counties on Understanding the Homelessness Executive Order, the Federal Shifts, County Impacts, and Next Steps. And that was very informative to find out how that executive order is going to be impacting counties. Attended the National Association of Counties West Region Meeting. Attended with Commissioner Grant the Behavioral Health Association Employee Appreciation Event. It was a great event, and it was always, it's always good when we appreciate all the hard work that the employees there are doing. Attended the overdose awareness event. Great job to our Public Health and Social Services team for an event that was, I believe, very well-attended, and it was very thoughtful. Attended our local EMS barbecue appreciation. Shout out to all of our volunteers who really participate whenever there, when there's a call for help, as well as the Panorama Community Partners Appreciation Gathering and the Garden Youth Development Program Annual Harvest Festival at Family Juvenile Court. Attended the State Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting. And I've just had several, multiple internal and external meetings covering a variety of topics from immigration enforcement to FIFA fan zones to code compliance to code enforcement. So that's, that's my report, sir.
Commissioner Grant?
Sure. Yeah, so I also, I think everyone's covered quite a few of the things that we all attended, but I did attend the Fire Commissioner meeting with Commissioner Fournier. Went on the home building bus tour, participated in the jail space crisis work group, did a meet and greet at the Olympia Senior Center, which was really great, a tour, and, and learned quite a bit about the amazing programs that are going on at our senior center. Met with some constituents out in Yelm about the canal, the central, or the Centralia City Light Canal and the bridges that, that they're working on trying to get replaced. Attended the Green Cove Ribbon Cutting, the Thurston Mason BH ASO Employee Appreciation, overdose awareness. Met with Judge Skinder, attended some meetings with homes first, and then Panorama, and then several other meetings with, one-on-one with community members. And that's me for the last couple weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, you guys, we read a lot of the same things. So I'll just cover a couple of things that weren't on anyone else's list. Did a tour with, of rebuilding together projects. One particular project, former Tanwater Mayor Pete Komet was working there and wanted me to see kind of like really close up, like, the kind of work that's done. This was over near Black Lake, and gave me an overview of some other projects and challenges that they're, that they're facing. Attended Women's Equality Day at the Schmidt Museum. That was a couple Sundays ago, I believe. And also attended a press conference with the Commissioner of Public Lands regarding protection of structurally complex forest. I want to say about that, that the, there's some preliminary mapping that came out along with that, but I was assured this morning by the Commissioner that that's preliminary mapping, and there's a lot of input being given in terms of what that final map should look like in Thurston County. Some of the areas we were most concerned about were not on the map. So I have sent a separate letter to the Commissioner, but about, you know, just kind of making sure that there's an understanding of that. But the basic thrust of the announcement was protection of 77,000 acres of structurally complex forests across the state.
the basic thrust of the announcement was protection of seventy-seven thousand acres of structurally complex forests across the state. But obviously, there's a lot of detail in that. And then also, the the Department of Natural Resources will be seeking legislative authority for additional revenue tools that will help fill in any revenue issues regarding beneficiaries. So lot to come there and I want we'd love to be part of that so that we make sure we get this right. It's an important step and so hopefully it'll move in a positive direction. So I'll stop there and we'll go to public comment for general matters. We have three folks signed up. If you haven't signed up, I'll call for your this patient at the end. First up, Patricia Williams.
Hi. I'm Trish Williams and I live within a mile of the Atchison Road Railroad Crossing. So are you all with me on that?
Yes.
Okay. So for the quiet zone request, you have all the statistics on the number of trains, the horn blows, the decibels, the cars, and the pedestrians. You're aware of the lake reflecting the sound and the ricocheting of the sound off buildings. You know that because the four whistles are required no sooner than fifteen to twenty seconds before reaching the crossing, there is horn blowing after the engine has already passed the crossing. So let me personalize this. I have lived near the train tracks at the dead end of Patterson Lake Drive across the street from the lake since nineteen seventy-seven. Back then, the brief sounding of the horns was muted background music. I loved it. In two thousand and three, I moved my elderly parents into the apartments across the street from me on the lake. My mother was disabled and loved watching the trains pass over the trestle as she talked on the phone to distant friends and relatives. Then, after the number of trains increased and required four whistles each train, her phone conversations had to be paused for trains. She created her own train schedule so she could try to make her calls in between trains. I'm not exaggerating. She could not talk on the phone when the whistles blew. For another example of the noise problem, in twenty eighteen, we had a home office built. We knew we needed soundproofing for video and phone conferencing. Mitigating the train noise required specially constructed triple pane windows, double drywall, sound reducing insulation in all walls, including interior walls, and a special putty around all the junction boxes, switches, and outlets. This was no small expense. The volume and quantity of horn blowing cannot be overstated. Every night, I can plan on being jolted awake by horns several times, especially when the windows are open. When friends are visiting, everyone is trained. You hear the rumble, halt conversation, and wait for the horn pattern. Too long, one short, one long. Sometimes we try to lighten the mood with jokingly interspersing bits of sentences in between the horn screeching blows. It goes like this. Screech, the county commissioners, screech, are debating, screech, our problem, screech. Please move forward to create the quiet zone for us.
John Pettit. Jack Bird on deck.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is John Pettit. And because of the topic of Patterson Lake, and I grew up on that lake also. I don't want to disappoint these people, but the commissioners really have no interest in doing anything. Because actions speak louder than words and this topic's been in front of them for a long time. This is the simplest possible location to authorize the no whistle zone. It doesn't get any simpler. And yet, I've been hearing people come here for a year or more. This is like too easy. Actions speak louder than words. You can pretend that you're going to be listening. You can even pretend and go through the motions. Actions speak louder than words and a simple process that you have can make it happen. Otherwise, just tell people, we're not really interested. Now, my concern also has to go over into some other topics. One of the things that you as commissioners need to identify is is that whatever happens in any other department here, particularly not the elected ones, but the other departments, it's on you. It's on you. You're the one responsible. Now ultimately, yes, you have a manager over here and they may have managers underneath them, but the bottom line is all the responsibility for the things that happen are on you. One of the topics right now is the county needs more revenue. Well, that's a direct relationship to the Board of County Commissioners deciding we don't really want growth. We have a CPED department. It's commonly referred to as the Department of Resistance. You don't gain any property tax growth by continually fighting with everybody that does anything. And when people do things, suddenly, we have compliance people coming after them and throwing potential fines against them for doing something. And then, when requested, can I have the evidence? Well, we'll get that to you in another couple months. But during the meantime, you're still willing to go after people. We need major renovation. Actions speak louder than words. So when nothing happens, those actions say you don't care. If something happens, then we might even think you're representing the people of Thurston County. Thank you.
But not compliance actions.
Compliance too.
That's something happening. Okay, next up is Jack Bird.
Hello, I'm also here to talk about train noise. My name is Jack Bird. I live on Brianna Court Southeast, which runs parallel to the railroad track that is near the intersection on Atchison. And so, you know, as mentioned, like Patricia said, if you're outside in your front yard conversing, it is definitely a conversation stopper. And if we even if we have our back door open, we hear the noise reflecting off the hillside. And if we're watching television, we can no longer hear the program until the train passes by. So she said you knew the statistics about the number of trains, the number of cars and so forth. So now, until recently, I believed that train, the sounding of the horns was an unavoidable necessity. However, I have learned it also is reported that it has physiological and psychological impacts due to the level of decibels. The Federal Railroad Railroad Administration under the Department of Transportation actually has produced a report about the healthcare effects of transportation noise. Not only just trains, but planes and, you know, heavy traffic and so forth. They have also published a brochure. I have a copy of it here. It's called No Train Horn and is a guide to the quiet zone establishment process. And it takes you through. I'd like to submit this.
Thank you. When you're done, just hand it to the clerk and we'll get it.
To you? Okay, great. And in my and I just found this like in a five-minute Google search on train noise. That report came up. And also, I found out that the city of Edmonds has actually implemented some of the mitigating steps described successfully. You know, their train crosses right through the waterfront. And at the ferry crossing, there is was quite a bit of noise created and they've implemented mitigating processes. So it is possible. It's not it's not an unavoidable safety thing. What this obviously tells you is that if you're going to eliminate the train horns, you have to implement other safety measures. And it it lays these out. There's also a link, since this is more of an informative brochure, it lays out a link for more detailed process. So I want to give this resource to you and urge all of you to consider, act, and and create a safe zone for what is it, the eight thousand people that live in the Patterson Lake and adjoining areas that are impacted by the noise? Well, thank you.
We don't generally respond directly to public comment, but I do want, since this has come up, there's been a variety of different people. And it's been more than a year. Mr. Pettit said a year. It's been really three plus years, going back to Commissioner Edwards and me and I, when there was just three commissioners on the board. And then there's been new commissioners, three new commissioners, and I think we're a hundred percent supportive of the quiet zone. The issue we ran into was the safety measures that you that you describe. Our our legal team and and insurance team says that we take on we take on liabilities that we wouldn't otherwise have if we implement them, which has been, that's been the sticking point. It's not that we don't understand the issue. We don't we wouldn't, we all would very much like to implement the quiet zone if it were as easy as Mr. Pettit makes it sound. It's not. And I want to find a way around that, but we're still working through details related to that. It's not a dead issue. It's still a topic of conversation. And if we can find a satisfactory way to manage the additional liability, I I think the board would be amenable to it.
Yeah, I'm, you know, like us working internally, it has been hard because, you know, we we move forward and we get told by like our insurance and our attorneys, it's a no. And when I don't have a way in front of me, I always try to find a different way. I was I was in BuCota, just like at the last meeting for a memorial of their mayor. And and as bad as you guys have it, have you ever been to BuCota?
It's true there.
They live on the railroad tracks. And so I'm sitting there and I'm thinking, I'm like, okay, these 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 Patterson Lake folks, I have sympathy for them, but they have no idea what BuCota lives through. Like you're you're you it's it's worse. And so like my my thought is, hey, I'm going to work with the city of BuCota and see if they got a different answer from their insurance company. If they can get a different answer from their attorneys, then that might help us break something loose here. So I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna take the conversation with BuCota mayor and see see what she can do. And if they have success, then maybe we can we can use that as an example here to to help, you know, get when the gears get stuck, you got to find a way to get them get them free.
The mayor of Edmonds might be able to provide some insight.
Yeah.
Also, this document from the National Railroad Association. You know, it it lays out what the mitigating steps that would be acceptable from their end. So perhaps it's just a matter of becoming more, the lawyers and insurance people becoming more informed specifically about the matter and what alternatives are available.
I just want to say that, you know, I've attended several and, you know, my I've brought staff along with us and I've also sent the invitation to several members of the Patterson Lake community to federal administration, the Federal Railroad Administration trainings that they've had. And also, you know, brought in our insurance, a risk pool, executive director to have a conversation with them. So, yeah, so, you know, it's it is a slow-moving process because, of course, we're trying to make sure that we're crossing all, that we're going through every step of the process and being sure, you know, as Commissioner Minster mentioned, right, like the the insurance piece is is a pretty big piece, especially for any kind of improvements that we make and the liability that we take on. And so you know, we're we're trying to work our way through that and and sending in kind of all the up-to-date information. Our county engineer, not to call you out, is also here and I know he's been tracking on the latest information and we've been in touch with other counties as well, trying to see what, you know, what they're doing. So it's not something where, you know, we are, we're stalling, I think, as Commissioner Minster mentioned, right, it's something we are supportive of, but we just have to also be responsible in making sure that, you know, all of our bases are covered when it comes to this.
Exactly. Yeah, appreciate that. There's a lot of moving parts.
Thank you, Chair. I'll also add, I appreciate the residents for coming and talking to us about the personal impacts. As Patricia stated, we do have the statistics. Those have been provided to the board a number of times. So I know that we all have that information. I believe we've all reviewed that information. In recent weeks, I've been, I've had meetings with the county manager and some of our public works staff, as well as our risk manager, to talk about this issue further and this will be coming forward on a future agenda for commissioners' items. I've talked with the county manager about that, so I'll be bringing the matter forward in front of the board to talk about next steps and yeah, so we are working on it internally and I appreciate you all coming to talk with us and you should see us talking about it again pretty soon.
It reminded me like when like three years ago, the board was kind of told it's a no-go and I had a pile of papers. I did not take that pile of papers off my desk. I was like, I some way, we're gonna fit. And that pile of papers related to quiet zones is still is still on my desk because I I didn't, I didn't feel like there there had felt like there had to be a solution. We just haven't quite got there yet.
There must be a way because it's being done
Yeah.
in other parts.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson, did you want to give public comment? That we're on general. Yeah, we had a little ahead of schedule, so come on up.
My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I live at eighteen fourteen East Side Street in Olympia. I would like to discuss the proposal that some members of this body have put forth to remove this body from land use appeals. I understand your concern about being restricted from talking with constituents when you sit in an appeal role. That's a real tension and you're elected to be accessible. But I'd encourage you to see it a little bit differently. You're not being silenced. You're just asked to shift how those conversations happen. When an appeal is pending, constituents can still get their voices fully into the record and you can guide them there. The way you preserve fairness in the legal process is that way, but you also are ensuring the public still has access and influence. If the board steps out of the appeals altogether, the last word is left with an unelected hearing examiner or the courts. That means ordinary citizens lose their most direct democratic avenue for accountability. So I encourage you to keep things as they are. If anything, the county can manage the quasi judicial role with training and clear boundaries. Also, if this body gets out of the appeal role, the end result will be a decrease in the quality of decisions. Let me explain. Because the board is an elected body, it can include policy considerations in its decisions. It doesn't have to just stick with whether the examiner applied the code correctly. In practice, this body can overturn the examiner if it believes the project is inconsistent with broader county policy. In contrast, the the law strictly limits what a judge can do. A judge reviews the examiner's decision for legal error only. The judge can't reverse the examiner's decision based on policy grounds. What's worse is that the judge has to apply a presumption of correctness. The judge has to presume the hearing examiner's decision was correct. That makes it almost impossible for residents to succeed in an appeal in Superior Court. By contrast, this body does not have to apply a presumption of correctness to the examiner's decision. The third problem is attorney fees. It pretty much is impossible for a resident to use to an appeal to court because attorney fees are so expensive. The need for an attorney doesn't exist in this body if this body is handling the appeals. Taxpayers pay this body to make policy decisions. And voters elect this body to make policy decisions. Please do not change the appeal process in this county. Thank you.
Anyone else who did not get a chance to sign up, who wanted to give public comment on any matter whatsoever? John?
As I'm accustomed to public speaking, as you all know I am. My name is John O'Callahan. I'm a city councilman and fire commissioner for the Great City of Toninno. I want to say first off, thank you for the recognition and proclamation for our first responders nationwide and especially here. To that point, September thirteenth, from noon to three o'clock over at the Toninno Middle School, we have the First Responders Potluck Barbecue. It's the fourteenth year that we've been doing this. Obviously, it's the same as always. We got free hamburgers, free hot dogs. Everything is free. Pony rides for children of all ages. That means tie, you can ride one too. And And it's just to say thank you to all the first responders that we do have here in Thurston County. That's that's including the people that work to get the message out to all the different departments to say, hey, we need you over here so that we can just get up and go where where we're needed. Second, one of the things that you guys do look at is homeless issues and stuff like that. Years ago, I started bringing up the point that as in South County, especially in the city of Toninno, that we're going to start seeing more and more of an issue. More people that are couch surfing, more people that are just coming down to live up in the hills. Just homelessness in general. One of the shining stars that we do have in Toninno is the Toninno community, Action Community and the Food Bank. On thirteenth, at at, I think it starts at five o'clock, tickets are twenty five dollars. We are having a fundraiser to help the food bank. This last year alone, they've almost seen a quadrupling of people that they have to help with food, just food alone, never mind everything else that they do. So I'm inviting you guys to come on down to that as well. It's it's going to be over at the Toninno Eagles. I heard a quote and it goes something along these lines, and I could have, very good, but I encapsulate these. When we are at our worst, when things are at our worst, we are at our best. Come on down and see the best that Toninno has to offer. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment online? Those are all staff? Okay, thank you. That is the end of today's agenda. Thanks to everybody for participation. We are adjourned.